As it's necessary to protect public health, safety and welfare, Williamson County Schools is officially meeting electronically in light of the coronavirus pursuant to Executive Orders Number 16 and Number 71, signed by Governor Bill Lee, and waiver of Williamson County School Board Policy 1.400. Board members, would you please record your attendance via a voice?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Lydia Glenn. Angela Durham.
Angela Durham, present.
Dan Cash. Mr. Cash.
Dan Cash, Second District, present.
Elliot Mitchell.
Elliot Mitchell, present.
Brad Fiskus.
Brad Fiskus, present.
Jennifer Priya.
Jennifer Priya, present.
Jay Galbraith.
Jay Galbraith, present.
Sheila Cleveland.
Sheila Cleveland, present.
Candy Emerson.
Let me see if I can unmute you, Miss Emerson. No, I'm afraid that didn't work.
Tamara, are you able to unmute her?
Uh, no, I've asked to unmute, but I can't unmute her.
If I may, Madam Chair, Miss Emerson, if you hit the spacebar, that might work. Give that a try.
You have to hold it down.
And Candy, hold it down while you're speaking, please.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Rick Wimberly.
Rick Wimberly, present.
Eric Welch.
Eric Welch, present.
Casey Hall.
Casey Hall, present.
Nancy Garrett.
Nancy Garrett, present.
Madam Chair, you have 12 members present.
Thank you. We will now say the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Board members. We'll now move forward to items of particular public interest. This is the public comment portion of our agenda and allows us to hear from citizens on a variety of issues. Just as a reminder, citizens are required to state their names and addresses per our board policy. And as a standard for most, many board meetings, different public agencies, the board listens but does not respond to public comment or comment on public comments. Those speakers, you have three minutes to speak. And Mr. Casey Hall, who is the Board Vice Chair, has the official duty of being the timekeeper. Casey, if you'd please raise your hand. So, Mr. Hall will give you a warning at 2:30, and then we'll call time at 3:00. So, thank you. Our first speaker tonight is Lynn Holcomb.
This is Lynn Holcomb. I live at 8326 Alamo Road in Brentwood. We represent a group of parents and teachers that believe the primary purpose of an education system should focus on teaching our students the basics, subjects such as reading, writing, math, science and history. Items that fall outside of that primary purpose should be left to families. That includes teaching or indoctrinating students into any political position. We have closely followed the initiatives to tackle concerns of racism and inequities throughout the school system. We have a number of concerns regarding the initiatives discussed. First, the initiatives are outside of the stated goals of the school system. Second, there's been no data released to families showing if there's actually a prevalence of racially driven incidents or issues. One would think that this would be a prerequisite to try to solve an issue. Thirdly, there's been no information released to families regarding how the school system would pay for an extra $1 million consultant fee in an already budget-challenged year. On the first point of the Williamson County System's stated goals, there are 10 goals listed on the school's website. Nine of these goals address academic goals, such as achieving a target of 90% of graduating students, earning an ACT composite score of 21 or above, and continuously improving our average ACT composite scores, and increasing scholarship offerings and opportunities for our students after graduation. We have been one of the highest-ranking school systems in the state because we have focused on providing our students with an excellent academic education and equal opportunities for all of our students to attend college or career or technical education programs after graduation. We ask you to focus on the basics and don't go down the path of pushing any politics or political views in school. This potential detour into racial politics is dangerous and is not an overriding issue at our schools, as one of the other speakers in our group will prove that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Holcomb. Our next speaker is Josh Spradlin.
Yeah, I was wondering, can I defer to Lisa Church to speak next? I think she was second on our group's list. Would that be okay?
We have an official list, Mr. Spradlin, and I receive the speakers in order. I would have to, let me ask Ms. Osbrooks, our attorney, about that.
Okay.
Ms. Osbrooks, do we have flexibility in the order? She might be having some technical issues.
No worries. Thank you.
Mr. Golden, let me defer to you on this.
Madam Chair, our longstanding practice is the order in which they've signed up. So, I will tell you that from my perspective as superintendent, everyone's gonna have a time to speak, so they've got three minutes regardless. So, and actually, Ms. Osbrooks just went off mute. But from my perspective as superintendent, as long as Mr. Spradlin speaks, we have not deferred to another for their time, because every speaker has three minutes.
Ms. Osbrooks?
Not. Here it, if I might. Ms. Osbrooks just texted. I think she's having some technical difficulties.
Okay. Thank you. So...
Madam Chair, my recommendation would be to just go on with the list. And I will also say that in addition to the public comment, we always encourage folks to send emails to our board members as well.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Mr. Spradlin, if you'll please, thank you.
Yeah, it's not a big deal. Josh Spradlin, 8226 Frontier Lane, Brentwood, Tennessee. "We represent a group of parents and teachers that believe the primary purpose of an education system should focus on teaching our students the basics, subjects such as reading, writing, math, science and history. Items that fall outside of that primary purpose should be left to the families. That includes teaching or indoctrinating students into any political position or ideology. On the second point from the earlier speaker, I'm addressing if there is an overriding issue of racism in our schools. In January of this year, we sent in a public records request form seeking to understand the scope and breadth of the racism and diversity incidents in relation to our bullying complaints in Williamson County Schools. Racism is not and has not been an overriding issue in our schools. So, we wanted to review the data that our county submits to the state each year, the Civil Rights in Bullying Compliance Report. Here's what was reported. For the last two school years, there were 108 and 159 recorded cases of harassment. Intimidation, bullying or cyberbullying where investigations indicated that bullying occurred. There were 12 investigations involving race in one year and 24 in the next. An average of 13% of the total harassment cases were racism-related." Let's put that into perspective. There are 40,000 students in WCS. There are 177 instructional days. If you do the math, that means there are just over 7 million student days or incident opportunities. 1%, 1% of 7 million would be 70,000 incidents. WCS is at an average of 18 incidences per year, which is .00026%, rounded up to the closest 100,000. Congratulations, WCS. You don't have a macro-racism issue. You have isolated incidents. You are handling it quite well. WCS also has procedures and processes to handle any harassment cases. The individuals that create the harassment of any kind are punished and should be. The report issued from WCS to the state indicates that racism is not an overwhelming issue for our community. If there are parties saying there's an issue, who are they and who do they represent? How can we objectively quantify their issue? We understand that any bullying in our schools of any type shouldn't be tolerated, period. However, we believe that these issues should be addressed by an incident involving teachers, administrators, counselors, parents and students. During these last two school years, we have had challenges like no others between COVID lockdowns and remote learning. Our children have fallen behind in their education. Let's spend our time focused on the WCS kids' education, building schools and maintaining our high standards of educational excellence."
Thank you, Mr. Spradlin. Our next speaker is Loretta Lester.
Greetings. My name is Loretta Lester. I'm a mother of four young children. I've had children attend Pear Creek Elementary and one currently attends Oakley Elementary School. This Glenn has my address on record.
Ma'am, we do require folks to state their address.
Okay, I was told that if you had it on record that I did not have to say it during the meeting.
That is, that's not correct. We've had several people reach out prior to this meeting who wanted to speak and did not want to provide their address, and we said they did have to provide their address.
2101 Sporting Hill Bridge Road.
Thank you, ma'am.
Superintendent Golden and Williamson County Board members, I'd like to start by expressing my gratefulness for the work that you all continue to do for our children and this community specifically. I grew up in a community similar to Williamson County in Norfolk, Atlanta. And as a child, I was accustomed to being the minority in most settings in my neighborhood and often the only one in classroom settings. And for much of my primary school years, I really perceived that my only allies in the school were my guidance counselors. And so, that's important because whether there's a record, there are incidences that are taking place that aren't necessarily being documented, which I think is something that should be considered. Unfortunately, many of my teachers, even who were present for those incidences that happened that were inappropriate, really did not know how to deal with them. And as a minority student, that really, that burden was left on me. A lot of times, the children that I interacted with really had very narrow perceptions of minorities because of their lack of exposure and religious education. Because I'm intricated through middle and high school, I was fortunate to be in a more diverse school system, and interpersonal relationships flourished. And I credit this to the environment that was set by active school leadership. This wasn't something that the students did. This was something that started at the top that helped to nurture this. And the school leadership consistently saw input from minority parents and students. And this posture wasn't that, hey, let's do this for the minority students, but they saw the benefit for all students, which I hope that this board is able to see as well. Today, many more students are exposed to children with different ethnic backgrounds, but they still lack the education to navigate those interpersonal relationships. And for me as a parent, I'm very cautious with this knowledge. And my husband and I are committed to not only providing an excellent education, but also the environment. That classroom culture really does matter. And my hope is that they would be in an environment where they are treated with respect and valued as by the board of students. And as we all know, children are in school, obviously, for their academics, but much more is taught and learned in the classroom. And they are taught how to treat people, especially people who look differently to them. And these are social skills that will be valuable for the rest of their life.
30 seconds, ma'am.
Excuse me?
30 seconds, ma'am.
Teaching our children to interact with one another is a shared responsibility. And neglecting this directly impacts them reaching their full potential. So, let's honor the stated mission on the school's website, I'm sorry, the county's website, and provide all students with a quality education that supports their emotional and social development as well. And I understand that this is my primary role as a parent, educating, partner with the school system. And so, I'm asking a partner with you all as you seek to hire an organization who will likely assist you in addressing these issues and implementing changes in the future that affect my students specifically. I know that Superintendent Golden stated at a meeting that he wanted to hold off on this, but we are asking members of the board to please not wait on this to develop...
Thank you.
Something that would be... Thank you for...
Sure. Our next speaker is Laura Colan. Excuse me if I pronounce that wrong.
That's okay. Good evening. My name is Laura Coughlin. My address is 3007 Burlington Pass. That's in Franklin. I grew up in the Nashville area, and I have lived in Franklin for 13 years. I'm a wife to Kent. I'm mom to Robert, a 2016 graduate of Franklin High. Auntie Cooper, who attended Williamson County Schools from first grade through half of 10th grade. He is currently in a private school setting for his junior year. I've been a preschool teacher at Mustard Seed Preschool and a substitute teacher within the Williamson County system for six years. I mainly sub in elementary special ed. I wanted to speak to you tonight about why I'm involved in racial issues within our schools and our community, and why I think it is important that Williamson County adopts some policies and make changes for Williamson County to be more welcoming to a wide variety of backgrounds, beliefs and skin colors. Because I believe all people are made in God's image and are worthy of kindness and respect, I've been involved with a couple of grassroots community groups for a couple of years, mainly educating myself and helping to educate others about issues of race and racism in our community. My son Cooper and I were listening to public radio in the car after the last school board meeting, and a story came on about racial issues brought up at that meeting. About two sentences into the story, and my son said, "Oh, if I was black, I wouldn't send my kids to Williamson County Schools." That shocked me and began a great discussion about what he witnessed as a student in Williamson County, what he thought could be done differently, and it made me want to speak to you tonight. In the many parent-teacher conferences I've had over the years, yes, I'm concerned about their academic success. Sure, I care if they understood the material being taught. But more importantly, I'm concerned about how well they treat others around them. Are they kind and respectful to teachers, and do they treat others with kindness? Williamson County is great at tuning our horns about our ACT scores, our college acceptance rates, our national merit finalists and other marks of great academic success. I don't know the statistics, but I have seen schools busting at the seams with people moving into our county just for that high academic standard. But just as I wanted my children to be known for how they treated others, I would love for Williamson County to also be known for how their students, faculty and staff are treated. I know this is not solely a school issue. Schools can only do so much if our students are taught differently at home and in the community. But when racism and other forms of prejudice are witnessed and reported in our schools, the schools have a duty to do something about it. My son Robert, the 2016 graduate of Franklin High...
30 seconds, ma'am.
Thank you. He was killed in August. In the Times, with family and friends surrounding his memorial service, and in the six months since then, not one person has asked what his GPA was in high school. Not one person cares about his ACT score. But there have been story after story of how he was kind to those around him, how he looked people in the eye and spoke to everyone. He knew everyone was worthy of kindness and respect. Everyone who plays a role in our schools needs to know that too. Thank you so much for your time.
Next is Tamara Gravely Griffin.
Hello. Thank you all for providing this opportunity. Williamson County Schools has a reputation for being a top school system. Can you hear me okay?
Yes. Did you state your address?
Oh, no, I did not. Tamara Gravely Griffin, 1165 Penn Oaks Circle, Brentwood, Tennessee.
Thank you, ma'am.
Other groups in this meeting are encouraging the school system to encourage it to ignore the racial issues that have occurred within Williamson County Schools. I feel that 13% is a large number, especially considering that African-American students only make up less than 5% of the student body in most schools in Williamson County Schools. I encourage Williamson County Schools to have a uniform system to educate, address, and when necessary, make intentional corrections to make sure that all students feel valued and safe. We are educating our students to be, how to be global citizens and thrive, not only in Williamson County, but on the world stage. We, and this is, we keep saying this, and people, it disturbs me that it's become political for students to feel safe. And I refuse to allow my voice to be shut down because it makes people feel uncomfortable. This is the time when students are in school, when they're around us. We all need to have this dialogue. We are not going anywhere. We're not going to just move to Davidson County. We shouldn't have to just send our children to private school because our children are being called out, being made fun of. If it were your child, we wouldn't want your child to feel that way. These are things that we need to take the responsibility to deal with that in the school system. Because doing it at home, then we wouldn't have this issue if it was happening at home. Correct? I believe so. 13%, that's a large number. I don't think that's a small number, especially considering with African-American students. You can literally count the number of African-American students in the yearbooks. That's a large number. And so, I challenge everybody that's on this to really look in your heart and say, what do we want to be known for? Because it really disturbs me. It really disturbs me that it's being called political. There's nothing political about wanting every child in your community to feel valued. That's not politics. That's called being a good parent. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Lisa Church. Ms. Church?
Oh, okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, great. Okay. Hi, my name is Lisa Church, 6419 Annandale Cove. I am a part of a group of parents and teachers who believe the primary purpose of an education should focus on teaching the students the basics, reading, writing, math, science, history. Items that fall outside of that primary purpose should be left to the families. This includes teaching or indoctrinating students into any political perspective. One of the earlier speakers talked about how there's not been any information released to families about how the school system would pay for the extra $1 million, whatever we're gonna pay for consultants in a budget-challenged year. When I looked at Williamson County Open Finance, I found that our projected revenues are $529.59 million. The approved budget is $6.26.96 million, which is a shortfall of $97.37 million, which means we're planning to spend more money than we have. And at my house, that means you don't spend it. So, how about your house? Where are we gonna get the money to pay consultants for this unnecessary initiative? Why do we need to hire consultants when our county already employs a Title Line Coordinator and a 504 Coordinator, both of whose jobs have been, in quote, designated to handle inquiries regarding non-discrimination policies? That's a quote directly from the Williamson County website. We also have human resources, Williamson County employees that should be skilled in handling these issues, along with the counselors in the schools. There's been effectively no information given to the parents or families regarding the superintendent's desire to hire consultants on this issue. All of this leads to the question, why does the superintendent's office or the school board believe that we need to hire a team of consultants, spend some money, when we have no indication by the data that we have an issue? Again, it was .00026 or thereabouts, very, very, very small. If this is a big issue, inform us about the details of the proposal. Perspective consultants are usually provided a brief of engagement, and then return us provide the cost with an explanation of deliverables in the selection process. Let us see this brief. Let parents and other people in the county vote on it in the May election. If it's a good and necessary initiative, parents in Williamson County will vote for it. Everyone in Williamson County will support this process. In conclusion, my friends and I review three points. First, is this currently a goal for Williamson County Schools? Second, is there a racism issue? Third, has Williamson County communicated how we're gonna pay for it? The short answer is no. This is not a goal for Williamson County Schools. The math shows there is not an issue in our schools. And finally, they haven't communicated to us how they're going to afford this or informed why it's such a big issue. We do believe the school system should provide equal opportunities for all students to succeed academically while providing a safe environment for students and teachers. The data indicates Williamson County has done this. Incidents need to be handled. What's, 30 seconds?
Time.
Oh, time. Okay, our conclusion is we do not support this.
Our next speaker is Tyra King. Excuse me, everyone, if I'm mispronouncing your names tonight.
No, no worries. It's Tyra King. I'm at 508 Hope River Court. And I just really want to thank you guys for the opportunity to speak on tonight in regards to racial equity and appreciate all the points that have been made previously. And what I just want to concede and reiterate with this board is that it needs to continue to be a key focus. It's a thing needed beyond just for black and brown kids, but literally for all of our kids. And I know there's been many comments around math and what needs to be true here. I think it's an interesting thing around us talking the math because I think it also speaks to a bit of the lack of empathy in this space because oftentimes you have to be a person who looks like me to really understand there being a huge opportunity for that. For me, diversity is something hugely important. Diversity drives innovation. It drives creative thinking. It drives better ideas. And it's indicative of the world that we live in today. So, it's something that I feel that we as Williamson County should be so much more intentional in this space. It's a big issue. And we can continue to bring in the voices here to speak to the fact that it's an issue because I think we're at the point that we can no longer be quiet because it's impacting our kids. I have two daughters. We have two daughters that are in middle school. And they're getting a wonderful education from it, from a scholastic perspective, but there's a lot of isolation that comes with being one of the few people of color in their classrooms on a daily basis. So, I think for us here, what do we do? And I think we really need to be intentional in this space. We need to really have clear, authentic, in-depth, well-thought-out plan of attack. And it shouldn't just be an approach that we use by checking the boxes. It needs to be changed that, you know, that you all or that we are intentional at all levels, from curriculum, so the homework that's assigned. Black history, by the way, is American history. Why is it not incorporated? Same thing with Asian, Native American. Why is it not incorporated? And also the stories that we tell about Black America doesn't just have to be around poverty and slavery. There are brilliant inventors, skilled people that happen to just to be black. And why not be able to tell those stories? I know my daughter just worked on a recent project for art, and no one, the only people that folks knew outside of her, and she's a black girl, is Martin Luther King. So, how do we go beyond that?
30 seconds, ma'am.
30 seconds? Okay, awesome. I think also, as we look at change at all levels, experience and representation. So, how do we ensure a diverse slate when we talk student government? We talk clubs and organizations, administration. So, let's have our administration look like what America looks like. Let's have diversity within our teachers, our principals, and even from a board perspective. I just think really here, we just need to be intentional, and I think that's it. As we look at be nice, what does be nice mean? It means to be inclusive. So, we want to have everybody, students, not to be ignored. And we need to celebrate diversity at all levels. And thank you so much for your time.
Our next speaker is Jennifer Cortez.
Thank you. Um, I'm Jennifer Cortez and I live at 424 Savannah Way in Franklin. I'm here tonight to publicly thank Mr. Golden and the board for your continued efforts to make our schools safe for our families of color and other minority populations. I know it's difficult work and controversial. I have to echo what Ms. Griffin said. It's not a political issue in my mind. Um, there's no indoctrination, indoctrination trying to, that we're pushing for. Uh, we simply want safety for all of our students. It's a safety issue. And if kids are not safe, then they can't learn. So, um, as I mentioned in my comments earlier last year, a local grassroots group has been formed to support these efforts. And we welcome anyone to, uh, learn more about us at onewillco.org. We welcome, um, all viewpoints and we want to open up dialogue and help, um, bring people together on this issue. We were encouraged by your comments at Thursday night's work session and we are eager to help support any expert hired by the district to create sustainable and positive change. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Amia Nodich.
Hi, good evening. My name is Aima Ahunkai Nodich. I live at 718 Green Hill Boulevard in Brentwood. I'm happy to have a chance today to share my thoughts on the importance of racial equity in our schools. My husband and I have three children. The youngest is three and I hope that he'll be able to attend EES, where his eight-year-old brother and ten-year-old sister are currently in third and fifth grade. We moved to Tennessee in 2016 from the Northeast where I was born and raised. I, like others, heard that Williamson County was the best decision for schools and we moved to Brentwood for this reason, when my ten-year-old was then in first grade. While she had a wonderful first year for the most part, I nearly fell out of my chair when I learned that one of their planned field trips was to visit a plantation. I was shocked, is this a thing in the South? Why were first graders who had not even yet learned about slavery visiting a plantation? The objective, I later learned, was to learn about harvest ceremonies. Despite every objecting bone in my body, I chaperoned the field trip. I realized that I could not provide honest feedback without doing so and my experience there confirmed my fears. In my opinion, the only lasting legacy of learning about harvest ceremonies on the backdrop of a plantation was to water down what the plantation itself represented. This was not a fun place to learn to use a quill pen or a cool place to learn a line dance or make cider. On this plantation, human beings who looked like me and my children were enslaved, held as property, beaten, and abused. Allowing kids to leave with this impression left a deep pit in my stomach. I was relieved that the principal at EES was receptive to discussion and input from me and other parents. It was clear to me that a diversity of perspective was missing. The obvious connotations of this field trip for me and many other parents of color was not obvious to others. This is just one example of the many stories I can tell you about my experience and that of my children at EES. As they've gotten older, the direct impact on my children has become more over, overt, whether through macro or microaggressions or the lingering effects of structural racism. We have reached a critical moment in this country where the importance of these conversations and structured efforts to ensure racial equity is being recognized in institutions across the United States. Minimizing the importance of this topic simply minimizes the voices of racial and ethnic minorities, their families, and their children. It lacks a diversity of perspective, a lack of empathy, and an unwillingness to understand the essence of the minority experience in this country and the value of our three children. This is not political. The well-being of our children, of my children, is deeply personal. In healthcare, where my husband and I both work as physicians, we are also championing these efforts. But nowhere, I would argue, is this more important than the environment where we create and nurture young minds. I urge the board to support a racial equity task force to place these as a central priority in our schools. Thank you.
And our final speaker tonight is WCEA President Laura Clayman, who is making a, a report.
Good evening. I'm Laura Clayman, Designing as President of the Williamson County Education Association. I will be addressing the so-called race that our legislature voted to provide teachers issue. Most people and teachers would be pleased to see a raise for teachers, but this is not what happened. While I welcome any bonus, I want to be very clear that what we are receiving is not a raise and most definitely is nowhere near the reported two percent. The amount that a first-year teacher with zero experience and a bachelor's degree will receive is only one point one percent of their salary. A teacher with twenty-one-plus years and a master's degree will see even less, only point seven percent. What our legislators did was increase the BEP portion for the state's school fund, state formula, by four percent, or half a year, from January to June. On the surface, that seems like a two percent raise. However, these are non-recurring funds, meaning our county will not get this funding again. Further, our county only receives about one-third of the full BEP allotment because Tennessee uses a Robin Hood approach to provide more funding to less prosperous counties. Wealthier counties like Williamson and Sevier must shoulder much more of the burden for educating our students. The BEP formula also only bases teacher salaries on a state minimum salary line with maximum class sizes to allocate the number of teacher positions the district may receive. So with one hundred kindergarten students, the state will only pay for four and not five teachers, meaning twenty-five students per teacher versus the twenty that Williamson provides. Tennessee has the funding to provide more to our schools and teachers as the administration reported a three hundred and sixty-nine million dollar surplus at the end of the 2020 fiscal year and has already collected one billion more than anticipated in the first five months of this fiscal year. The funding that will pay for the teacher bonus came from a surplus in the Tennessee Assistance to Needy Families Program, also known as PEEs. I encourage everyone to remember Tennessee's surpluses as teacher raises are discussed in the legislature. I also challenge everyone with a graduating college senior to closely examine the commitments they can make. Notice how few students are graduating from the College of Education compared to other colleges. My daughter graduated from the University of Alabama this December.
Thirty seconds.
That's a forty-four pages of student names. Only one contained the name of future teachers. We must do more to attract and retain our teachers. Thank you.
That concludes our public comment for the evening. And we will now move to the approval of tonight's meeting agenda. Does anyone want to make a motion to approve?
So moved by Elliot Mitchell.
Motion by Mr. Mitchell, is there a second?
Uh, Rick Wimberly, second.
With Wimberly seconds, is there any discussion? If not, we will move to a voice vote.
Thank you, Madam Chair, this is Lydia Glenn. Angela Durham?
Angela Durham, yes.
Dan Cash?
Dan Cash, yes.
Elliot Mitchell?
Elliot Mitchell, yes.
Brad Fiskus?
Brad Fiskus, yes.
Janapria?
Janapria, yes.
Jay Galbraith?
Jay Galbraith, yes.
Sheila Cleveland?
Sheila Cleveland, yes.
Candy Emerson?
Candy Emerson, yes.
Rick Wimberly?
Rick Wimberly, yes.
Eric Welch?
Eric Welch, yes.
Casey Hall?
Casey Hall, yes.
Nancy Garrett?
Nancy Garrett, yes.
Your vote is twelve yes, zero no.
Thank you, Board members. The next item on tonight's agenda is the approval of the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Mr. Dan Cash makes the motion. Is there a second?
Janapria, second.
Ms. Apria, seconds, is there any discussion? If not, then we'll move to another vote. Ms. Glenn, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, this is Lydia Glenn. Angela Durham?
Angela Durham, yes.
Dan Cash?
Dan Cash, yes.
Elliot Mitchell?
Elliot Mitchell, yes.
Brad Fiskus?
Brad Fiskus, yes.
Janapria?
Sorry, Janapria, yes.
Jay Galbraith?
Jay Galbraith, yes.
Sheila Cleveland?
Sheila Cleveland, yes.
Candy Emerson?
Candy Emerson, yes.
Rick Wimberly?
Rick Wimberly, yes.
Eric Welch?
Eric Welch, yes.
Casey Hall?
Casey Hall, yes.
Nancy Garrett?
Nancy Garrett, yes.
Your vote is twelve yes, zero no.
Thank you, Board. By approv- by approval of the consent agenda, you've approved the following items. The approval of the January nineteenth, twenty-twenty-one School Board Meeting Minutes and the following board policies for second reading. Char- the charter school application policy, personnel health exams policy, the acquired immune deficiency syndrome policy, and the hepatitis B policy. And now we'll move to communications to the board and go to our superintendent's report from Director Golden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I want to first, uh, thank all the, uh, folks who came in as public speaking. Um, you know, there's been a long tradition of public speakers in, uh, in our community. And I know that he, that how we communicate evolves over time and we get a whole lot more emails than, uh, than, uh, what, uh, so many of you got. Um, back, back when this whole thing started, when we made sure that we allowed our community to speak publicly. So I want to thank them. I'm going to give you a brief reminder of what we talked about at our work session and then, uh, and then finish up with, um, some, some new things uh, that, uh, that developed over the last, uh, couple of days. So first, just for those who didn't watch our, our work session, I want to let them know that we, we talked about, um, uh, really four things. One was our, our winter screener data, uh, for, that, uh, that gave us some insight into our student performance and where they were. Second, we talked about the special legislative session that was, uh, that was over the course of January. And then finally, we gave some description of our, of our on-campus instruction, uh, related to COVID. I'm not going to go into those details, uh, again, in, in any significant depth, but I do want to encourage folks to pull up our website and look through that work session if you'd like to review some of that. So the short version, uh, is with our winter screener data, we see that we've made some pretty good progress, uh, with our elementary students when we, when we study how our screener measures, um, our student readiness for their grade level of work, from the fall screener to the, uh, to the winter screener. So we've been pretty pleased with that. Uh, and we, we also know that, uh, we've really had a focus on our current first graders. Those were the kindergartners, of course, last year, uh, who were, who were out of school last spring. So, uh, we know we have a lot more work to do. Uh, and every single day, uh, instruction matters, uh, in Williamson County schools. So again, I'd refer everyone to, to some of that detail that they can see. Second, we talked about the special session of the legislature. Um, one of the items on tonight's agenda is, uh, directly related to part of what the legislature did in its special session for education, and that is the teachers' pay, uh, reference. Uh, I do appreciate, uh, Ms. Clayman for, for speaking to some of that detail with the legislature. I will tell you one detail, uh, that, that, uh, that, uh, that I want to emphasize is when she talked about four percent, um, it was actually, um, one-half of two percent uh, that the legislature put into the instructional component of the BEP. Uh, and as you know from our work session, uh, that, that what we have done in consultation with WCA leadership is taken that money and equally divided it among our professionals who fit into that instructional component of the BEP. And that's the, that's what you will see, uh, on, on our agenda for a vote. Ms. Clayman got it right. It's a one-time payment from the legislature. I certainly, uh, uh, appreciate it, but every time the legislature funds, especially pay with education, uh, I think it's important, especially here in Williamson County, for us to point out that our county bears the majority of support for our school system. And our, our county commissioners, um, have that responsibility to fund once you all determine, uh, what, what, uh, what, what, uh, is appropriate based on our vote from a budget perspective. So it is quite limited, uh, but it is a, uh, what I think of as a gesture from the legislature to acknowledge that, uh, for, for our teachers. And again, you'll see that a little bit later in the agenda. Um, next thing I mentioned, uh, and we talked about, uh, last Thursday was on-campus instruction and some COVID-related issues. Um, we've been pretty pleased these last four weeks with, uh, with how, I think the phrase I used was how we've turned a corner, uh, with our students being on campus. Every day is a challenge, uh, still. Uh, we still are having positive cases and quarantines, but, but the, but the numbers have gone down. And, uh, largely for these last four weeks, we've been able to keep, uh, keep our goal, uh, um, which is if, if we can safely have school on campus, we will do it. Uh, and so again, uh, we'll be working on that on a daily basis. But, um, one of the things I wanted to, to just repeat that I talked about at the work session was, um, our community, uh, and their, and, you know, they're being careful even while off-campus. And I think that's been a help to us in, uh, making sure we're still on campus. With that being said, as we sit here today, if anyone looks at this in a few years, and, uh, I'd be, I'd be surprised if they did, uh, it'd be important for me to tell them we have a little bit of snow outside. Uh, we've had one of the, the, the larger weather events that we've had in a number of years. Uh, and, uh, today was not a student day. It was a teacher work day. We were able to do our teacher, um, professional development day virtually. Um, those PD days, those professional development days are built into our calendar. Uh, and, um, it actually, if we had not done it, would actually officially count as an inclement weather day, uh, which would in turn have to be made up because of our obligations for, for professional development. Um, and so, um, we were, we were able to do that remotely with our teachers. I'm so proud of our teachers and the work that they did. Um, I think if anybody's been out, it's pretty obvious why we didn't do that on campus. Uh, we have a layer of ice with some sleet and/or snow on top of that and then another layer on top of that. So we made a decision, uh, today and announced that, um, we will, uh, have inclement weather days the next two days, which is Tuesday, Wednesday. There is some indication that things might get a little bit better on Wednesday. Um, uh, but I gotta tell y'all, it's not looking good. Um, um, we're gonna, we're, we're giving it a chance, but we did something really unusual in closing for two days. Um, but, um, one of the things we're going to especially look at is whether we have the capability of, of, uh, providing our inclement weather sites, uh, for, for our school-aged childcare, at, at the least, uh, when, when Thursday hits. But if something unusual happens and, uh, and the sun, sun comes out, um, we, we wanted to leave that possibility open. But we also wanted to make sure that our families, uh, could plan, especially for childcare these next couple of days. Um, related to that, we have built ten days into our instructional calendar. And I know a couple of you as board members have asked me about that. Uh, now, when, when I say we built those in, we give extra instructional time over the course of the year to, uh, to, to, in essence, create those ten days. Um, after this coming Wednesday, we will have used five of those ten days for inclement weather. And I know one of the questions that you all asked is, is there a possibility of us doing remote instruction, uh, um, uh, related to weather? Um, that is a possibility. You know, the, the, uh, the, the, the discussion we've had over the course of this year is, uh, long-term, uh, because we're developing these tools, there is a likelihood of that. Um, what we wanted to make sure that we did, uh, especially with this, with this event coming, was honor our family's expectations and the commitment we, we made when we created this calendar, that we built in, um, those extra instructional days. Um, I do believe that, that, uh, long-term, that there will be some evolution of that. Uh, but from a, from a, um, from a, from a safety perspective and from a planning perspective, um, we, we've, uh, we've built those days in and we're using those right now. Um, I, I will tell you also that some of our neighbors, uh, across Tennessee are, 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 are looking at things differently. Some of our neighbors actually started school late this year because of COVID and consumed all their inclement weather days and are needing to do that. But for us, uh, we do have that flexibility, at least for the next few days. We don't know what the, whether, what the future's going to hold the rest of this winter. Uh, and it is possible, uh, that we may end up needing to do, uh, a, um, a, a, uh, virtual day. I do know at the least that will eliminate us, um, uh, or virtually eliminate us, um, needing to extend the calendar into the summer. like we've, we as school administrators have always known as a possibility if we consume all those days. Felt like it's important to mention that to you because I know you all had some questions about that. I do want to encourage everyone to be safe. So we told our staff, don't drive, don't drive into the schools, don't drive into the offices right now. And our safety staff will continue to work on that. I also want to let you know that from a vaccine standpoint, we are continuing to monitor where the state is and communicate with the local health department. I am not at the stage of saying I'm going to hold my breath until the vaccine's made available to our faculty and staff, but I'm looking forward to the possibility in the next few weeks because I know they're serving the next step right above us with that vaccine. Many of our faculty members, and I'm thinking probably in the low hundreds, have gotten the vaccine at other locations. We have about 3,600 employees who've told us that they want the vaccine when we're able to administer it. So I believe that's going to be another corner when we turn that. And the final thing I want to mention to you is the final thing we talked about at our work session last Thursday, and something that we've been talking about regularly this school year. And that's what was discussed largely by those members of the community, improving how we serve our diverse student body. And I'm actually pleased that we had those public comments because you know that we've been talking about this really throughout this school year. And we didn't get a lot of public comment early on, but I think the word is getting out that this is an issue that we've been discussing. And so I'm happy that our community's there. And I want to emphasize that, I mean, we are a great school district. You all know it. You heard some of the examples from some of those folks who made public comment. We have a really good strategic plan. Many of you here participated in developing that strategic plan. I participated in it when I was the deputy superintendent in developing that strategic plan. It is true that diversity and race questions and race issues are not mentioned in that strategic plan. As I mentioned to you, I have heard from some folks that at that time, there was not comfort in being able to speak to that in those meetings that we had. And frankly, we didn't realize it at the time, that that was where we were. But there has been a change in the way our students communicate with us. I have heard that from some of our students and some of our young alumni that while this is, while they did have a really good experience with WCS, there were some examples where that experience wasn't so good. That for some of them, especially our students who are minorities, that they experienced discrimination. Some of it subtle, some of it not so subtle. I've heard that some of it went reported and some of it did not go reported. I have heard from individuals that there were times where they didn't feel safe in our community. And you all know this because we've been discussing this. What I do know now is that those students and even some of those young alumni have reached a point where they're comfortable telling us that that has been their experience from time to time. And I've concluded we have a responsibility to help grow that so that that experience for all our students that we're so proud of is available. And I tell you, we've done some things over the years. We've done some professional development, we've brought in speakers, we've put policies in place. And what we've learned over the past few months, past year or so, is that those points of growth haven't fundamentally changed those reports that we've heard from students about feeling safe all the time and being comfortable reporting. We've looked at the statistics. Those statistics are actually reported on the state's website, and they have been conveyed to you accurately. But what we know is that not all reports have actually been made. Not all incidents have gone reported. And you know, you all know from the time we've discussed this that some of the work that we did to try to grow this on our own may have set us back from time to time. And I've concluded that we do need that expert help if we're going to make sustainable and substantial progress for our students. So we talked about bringing in a consultant to help us grow and have a plan. Somebody with some expertise in this who can give us an insight other than from staff members who have been working on this over the course of years without that significant change. And so we have brought to you, really for the second company, to ask you to approve a plan, a consulting contract later on in this agenda. And we had a lot of discussion, we had some really good, robust discussion about this at the work session. And so I want to make sure that everyone hears one of the additional pieces of information that we gave you after your request on Thursday. And Fostering Healthy Solutions gave us a summary of their initial steps, where they're going to start. Number one, with initial orientation and training, they're going to have an introductory meeting with the board, do some initial board training, and then executive leadership training for us to help us. Second, they're going to review our policies. They're going to review our procedures related to bullying, discrimination, and harassment, and our disciplinary measures. You know, we put some policies in place, and I have over the years talked about our good policies. This is going to give a different perspective so that somebody outside can look at it. They're going to provide us guidance and resources for administrators and teachers. And they are going to help us define words and actions that may result in disciplinary action when used on school grounds. And we do discipline for some of that, but again, we're going to get a perspective that's going to help us make sure that we grow how we serve those students. Third, they are going to establish advisory groups that include former or and/or current administrators, faculty, staff, parents, students, and community members to lead diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts. So that's, you know, they're talking about the scope of our community, the scope of our stakeholders, and getting them involved. They also gave us a blueprint for the additional scope of their work to follow those initial steps. Number one, they're going to establish some benchmarks for success based on those conversations we have with our stakeholders. They're going to summarize the data and feedback that the stakeholders give us as part of that and identify those issues. They're going to review those results with me and with our leadership team and help us identify priorities based on what is shared. And then they're going to design strategies for us to plan and to set goals for implementation and execution of what we learn. And then continued training directed to meet the goals of that plan with all our stakeholders, with focus groups, administrators, faculty, staff, and of course, students. So I know that was a big issue for many of you as we talked, that we want to know where we're going to start. I also want to hit a couple of fact points. This contract is for this current budget year for $55,000. I don't know where the million-dollar discussion came from, no. We did talk about a million dollars or so in matching that $450 proposed payment to our teachers. That's the only thing I can imagine where a million dollars came up, other than some capital items. $55,000 for this budget year is what this consulting contract is for. On paper, I have an obligation under our board policy to bring to you any consultant contract that's for $10,000 or more. And I tell you, my predecessors have sometimes gotten professional development in this arena for just under that. I'm looking for something that is more thought out, something that's more sustainable, so that we can find a way for those students who have finally gotten the courage to say they did not feel safe or they weren't comfortable reporting incidents, to help grow how we serve them. Another item I want to mention that was alluded to by one of the speakers. We actually, and it's not directly related to this discussion, at least from my perspective, but I think it has the potential to be over time. We have had students just in the past year express some interest in African-American history, and there is a state course. And so we are adding that African-American history course to next year's curriculum at three schools due to student interest. Many of our electives at each individual school are based on student interest. And so Ravenwood, Centennial, and Page High all have that course as an opportunity for folks to sign up. And I didn't intend to mention that in what I was talking to you about from a superintendent's perspective, or the million dollars, but I felt like it was important for you to hear both of those two facts just so you can be fully informed as to the perspectives that you heard from the individual speakers. I will tell you also, every one of our community members and every one of our speakers that I've talked to, they are sharing their experiences, and those experiences are real, those experiences are genuine. Those who told you that their students have had unbelievably great experiences, I know they did. Those who've told you that their children have had those moments of struggle, I know they did. I trust what they tell us. And I think it's time for us to try to do something more coherent in doing some planning to help grow it. So, Madam Chair, that's my report. I appreciate so much, and I've said this before, really, I think just last month when we were facing the week of celebrating school board members. Thank you all for your volunteer work. I know you get a tiny little bit, in my opinion, basically covers some expenses. But what you're doing in helping lead our community is a labor of love. In my view, not any different from the labor of love our teachers give our students every day. So, Madam Chair, I'm open to any questions.
We do have one question from Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Golden, you spoke about the school district being selected to administer vaccine shots. Can you, do we have an ETA on when that might occur?
Well, I will tell you, the health department has been very careful not to give a specific ETA. I'm talking about our local health department because they receive vaccines from the state. So they're very careful not to. I would like to defer to Mr. Anderson, who is directing our health and safety efforts, to share as much detail as he can based on that.
Yes, thank you, this is Gary Anderson. What we have heard so far is that there may be an announcement coming soon that the whole state will be able to move into the 1B category. When that announcement is made, then we are very hopeful that we will be very quickly after that receiving our doses to move forward with our vaccinations. We've heard this should be by the beginning of March, no later than the beginning of March is our hope.
So if I may add a little bit to that for our planning purposes, we have, like I said, about 3,600 folks who are looking to get the vaccine. And when we talk about 1B for schools, it's everybody who works for a school. Full-time, part-time, substitute teachers, school board members, everyone who works for the school system in some way, somehow. And we are going to be handling the signup for our people through SignUp Genius. So we're actually going to be sending an email. Did I get that right, Gary, SignUp Genius?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Okay. So we're going to be actually sending an email to our folks to say that if you'd like to click on SignUp Genius and register, it actually makes it easier for you to sign up for the particular times once we're able to post those. So that will be coming pretty soon. You don't have to register with SignUp Genius to be able to use it, but it just facilitates, it makes it a little simpler, as I understand it, from the folks related to the app. I wish I could give you a specific date and time. As soon as that announcement comes, we'll be able to. And Gary, I'm going to add something else that I think is a little bit of an educated guesswork. Metro Nashville is not part of the state health department. You know, our locals are actually state employees, but some of the large metro areas are actually their own health department, not directed by the state. They announced that they believe they're going to be able to start teacher vaccines, if I'm not mistaken, Gary, on February 22nd, if I have the date right, right around there. If they've announced that, that implies to me that the volume of the vaccines is such that they believe they can go to 1B. So I'd be surprised if we weren't right in that date area, somewhere in that range of time. But Gary said March, I think he's probably being more appropriate than me because I don't want to build up hope if it's not there. But that's what I'm hoping for.
We do have a couple of other questions, Ms. Durham.
Thank you, Ms. Garrett. Just one question, Jason, when you mentioned the classes that are being instituted, are they optional for the students who do want to take them, or are they required classes?
That is a great question. It is an elective, it's a state course that we've had enough student interest expressed that we are going to offer it at those three high schools. Not a requirement in elective.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hall.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And this is not a question, this is more of a comment. Yesterday, as the weather was coming through, I was wondering if we were even going to be able to have this meeting. And, you know, we take it for granted now that we can all be remote and get together, even though we'd never done this 10 months ago. So I just want to thank your staff, Tim McNeese, Brian King, and those folks in particular for all they've done over these months, but in particular, making sure that everybody had what they needed today to be able to connect in. And I'm sure that they've had to be on-site and put out fires, or doing so remotely is not easy either. So I really appreciate everything that's been done behind the scenes to make this happen.
Thank you for that, Mr. Hall. It's impossible to thank folks enough, and so as a result, I probably don't say it enough, right? What's been done by our staff, from the teachers, I mean, everybody, with what we've been, you know, with every challenge that touches us, has been pretty incredible. And I appreciate you specifically mentioning them.
Thank you. I believe that's everything. Mr. Golden, and since I'm speaking, I'll just go ahead and move to the next item. The district update from Ms. Carol Birdsong.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am Carol Birdsong, and Brian King, and Tim McNeese are going to help me with this PowerPoint as we celebrate some students tonight and some teachers as well. So we are going to start with the arts, and we're going to start with all-state band. These students are from Brentwood High School, they did make the all-state band. Stephen Walter and Rena Chu. Andrew O'Keefe is their teacher from Centennial High School. We have Alex Gardner, Colin Miller, and Adam Phillips. Their band director is Scott Miller. From Franklin High School, we have Anna Marie Love and Lucas Farden. Their band director is Jacob Campos. From Independence High School, this is Chance Broders, and his band director is Tyler Dietrich. From Nolansville High School, several students here, Myla Chris-Mason, Hannah Goldstone, Casey Martins, Kalen McCarter. Their band director is Benjamin Easley. From Page High School, Porter Doche, band director, Michael Rosson. All-state band from Ravenwood High School, several students here, Bradley Bork, Ella French, Haley McBride, Matthew Mueller, Josh Zo. Chris Genwick is the band director. And from Summit High School, Dorothy Burt and Sarah Kimbrough, band directors are Eric Harris and Scott Actually. Now, we're going to move to all-state orchestra. Brentwood High School, band director or orchestra director, or just director, is Andrew O'Keefe. Sally Coy, Yellen Park, Amy Chu, Brian Chu, and Laura Zimmerman. Centennial High School, Ella Cure and Preston Savenant. Allison Cowan, their instructor. Franklin High School, Marcus Chung, Dylan Cook. Ross Bader is their instructor. And then we go to Nolansville High School, Ella Coggins and Kerrigan Mandrell, Craig McDowell, their instructor. Also, from Ravenwood High School, all-state Also, from Ravenwood High School, all-state orchestra, and we have several students, so we have two slides, Kaitlyn Castleberry, Sarah Charulby, Sophie Sophie Lee, Diane Lu. Our next slide, Ashana Meta, Selena Wang, and Caitlin Wotak, Ross Bader, their instructor. Now we're moving to theater. And Franklin High School, these students made all-state theater, Lillian Brown, Bailey Dworkley-Slee, and Abby Webb. And Salty is their theater teacher. Rebecca Williams is the theater teacher at Independence High School, and these students made all-state theater, Annabelle Anderson, Olivia Cathy, Emma Douchino, and Emily Y. Banks, or Y. Banks. And also, Independence High School, we have more students from there, Zoe Phillips, Amelia Prowse, Nathaniel C., and Sam Wild, Becky Williams, their theater director as well. From Nolansville High School, Isabel Wickham made all-state theater. Laura Lindsay is their theater director. In athletics, congrats, Fairview High School made history as the T double S double A wrestling, single A, double A state dual champions. Their head coach is James Derrick. And then we have one staff spotlight tonight, and this is Jacob Campos from Franklin High, who is next Yamaha's 40 under 40. Congratulations to all of our students and staff.
Thank you, Ms. Birdsong. Now we'll move to a very quick board chair report. And it is my honor tonight to welcome the Panther Patrol to this meeting. And who is the Panther Patrol? Well, that is Boy Scout Troop 130, and they're here tonight because they are working on their community merit badge. So they're attending virtually and just taking in this meeting. So, welcome. We're glad we're glad you guys are here. We miss seeing our scout troops coming to our meetings and miss getting to talk to them in person, so thank you for making the effort to be here tonight. I also want to congratulate our district district-wide classified and teachers of the year. We're very proud of you, and we're very happy that you've received this honor, particularly in this very difficult year. So, thank you very much, and again, congratulations. I want to remind the board of our budget meeting, March 4th, please make every effort to attend, and that's where you'll get all of your questions answered about the budget. So, just, it's a really important meeting, and we will do that virtually as well. One other quick thing, just a reminder that we're in the Tennessee State Legislative Session, and just to to keep up to date on what's going on with the legislature. And with that, I just want to ask our legislative leads, Sheila and Rick, if you have anything to say, Ms. Cleveland or Mr. Wimberly.
I don't know that I have a lot to add from the, oh, Mr. Rick Wimberly, by the way. I don't know that I have a lot to add from the Thursday work session. Some of the things that that we talked about are new pieces of legislation that address funding, particularly in the high-growth districts, which includes us. And already, there have been several mentions tonight of the fact that that Williamson County, because of our our financial situation, that we don't get near the 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 funds from the state that other counties get. So, there are also, with some new legislation that was introduced, that would, in effect, expand the voucher program and quite materially, and that is by allowing any students or the families of any students who are diagnosed with some type of dyslexia to be able to apply for vouchers statewide. Whether that bill will pass or not, I don't know, but it's something that is is quite interesting and that we would watch. And that's about all I have, other than a few kind of procedural things. Sheila?
You know, I really don't have anything to add to that. I was amazed of how many bills are coming up for the education. I think I went through about 250 today that touched base with education. And but right now, I think one of the main ones is regarding the Discipline Act of how the, it's called the Teachers Discipline Act, and it basically requires each student disciplinary policy or code of conduct adopted by local Board of Educations or public chapter, chapter or school governing body to include provisions authorizing teachers and administrators to enforce the student discipline policy or code of conduct and to hold the students' accountability for any disorderly conduct. And that's a big one, but it also goes with another one that affects the Students with Disability Act and their behavior. So those are ones, the two, we're really looking at, and there's some holes in it. And so I know I've talked to a legislator today about that, and hopefully those can be ironed out.
Thank you both, and also thanks for the detailed update on Thursday night. With that, we'll move on to our new business items, the first being the 2020-2021 School Board Budget. And our first item is the General Purpose Fund Resolution GPS Transfer to Extended School Program, Mr. Golden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a request to transfer up to $260,000 to what we call our SAC program, the Extended School Program, to address some projected revenue shortfalls that that might occur through through the end of this school year. I will tell you two things that I think are key. Number one, this is to be paid back over time to the extent that it's needed for the SAC program. Second, as we are preparing this, we actually finished up our the January books, and the SAC program ended up $48,000 ahead for the month of January. So so just like I spoke to us turning the corner, being on campus, likewise, we believe SAC is, but Rachel Farmer in our Finance Department is recommending that you approve up to 260,000 so that we can cover any any shortfalls before they occur from a accounting perspective, recommend approval.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve?
Elliot Mitchell moves to approve.
Mr. Mitchell approves. Do we have a second?
Dan Cash, second.
Dan Cash, seconds. Do we have any discussion? Yeah, this is for the panel here. I see no raised hands. I believe we can move to a vote, Ms. Glenn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Lydia Glenn. Angela Durham.
Angela Durham, yes.
Dan Cash.
Dan Cash, yes.
Elliot Mitchell.
Elliot Mitchell, yes.
Brad Fiskus.
There you go. Brad Fiskus, yes.
Jenna Priya.
Jenna Priya, yes.
Jake Albreth.
Jake Albreth, yes.
Sheila Cleveland.
Sheila Cleveland, yes.
Candy Emerson.
Candy Emerson, yes.
Rick Wimberly.
Rick Wimberly, yes.
Eric Welch.
Eric Welch, yes.
Casey Hall.
Casey Hall, yes.
Nancy Garrett.
Nancy Garrett, yes.
Your vote is 12 yes, zero no.
Thank you. Our next item is the General Purpose School Fund Resolution Bonus in All Funds, Mr. Golden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We addressed this just a little bit, but I want to give some specifics. The state has put $1,731,500 into the instructional component of the DEP. We have taken those funds and done the math for all those professional staff members who fit within that instructional component and and divided that evenly. That comes out to $449 in some pennies. We are recommending that you approve us to give a one-time pay increase to all those people of $450. In other words, we're rounding up. So we will use every dollar and every penny of the state funds for those teachers and others in that in that component, and that includes nurses, administrators, counselors, there are a number of folks in in that line. In addition to that, we are asking for some general funding to cover those extras from the pennies as we round it up, but also to give that same one-time pay to to our other staff members based on their 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 full-time versus part-time status. In other words, $450 per full-time person, and if someone is part-time, then a prorated amount based on their time. And like we talked about on Thursday, this is a thank you, this is a gesture. That's what the state gave, and so we're recommending that we give that as well, and we do recommend approval.
Is there a motion to approve?
Rick Wimberly moved to approve.
Mr. Wimberly makes the motion. Is there a second?
Jake Albreth, second.
Mr. Albreth, seconds. And I believe we have, Mr. Albreth, your hand is raised for discussion. Please proceed.
Yeah, Jake Albreth, thanks, Madam Chair. Jason, I took this exactly how you just how you just talked about it, and that is, this is an unbudgeted item. We had a we had a teacher raise in the budget initially, based on all all things, and obviously things changed between our us passing our initial budget and and COVID came, and everybody kind of backed off their backed off their budgets, and obviously, we didn't get as much money from the state. And we know we know how that ran, but I guess I was I was really, I was really disappointed to hear from WCEA that they were that that they were just, they were comparing this to a raise, it sounded like, and I might be misunderstanding, but it sounded like they were saying, well, this this isn't as good as a raise. I'm thinking, you know, we've we've kept everybody fully employed for for the year, have done it with a good amount of federal funds and and one-time funds, and I I just see this as, this is as much as we can do right now under our current budget, and it's it's a thank you. And I just, I saw nothing but good come come from this, and I was, I still don't know exactly where the million dollars is is coming from, but I I trust you guys to know that we're that we'll have more than enough funds coming coming back to us, and I suspect that our revenues are going to come in much higher than we used in our, and Ms. Farmer can can kind of validate that, but the numbers that we use to to project our revenues compared with what the state has actually had and what locally we've had, we far exceeded, I believe, what what our expectations were. So I hope that we can answer that to to say where the where the the million dollars is going to be funded. But I just, I was super excited to be able to to give everybody $450, and and I hope that I hope the teachers are are take this in the manner that it that it's presented, and it's a thank you, and it's as much as we can do. And I suspect that we will have a a raise in the in the in our upcoming budget, but I mean, there's there's tons of folks out there still unemployed, nobody's getting raises in this and with these uncertain economic times, and so I was just, it really it really took me off guard, so I maybe maybe I took that wrong, but so just had to say that. I'm excited about this and appreciate us doing it.
Well, then, thank you, Mr. Galbraith. Let me hit two two things. First, on the on the on the funding side, this is coming out of fund balance. Absent the state doing this, I don't know that I would have asked for this. I would have probably addressed this in next year's budget, because when you take something out of fund balance, it makes budgeting for the next year that much more difficult. And I think we will have some challenging times in our budget for next year, in part because we we've been able to identify some real pain points where we need more help, and we'll be bringing to those to you next month. I will tell you also that I've had some really good conversations with Ms. Claman, and part of our part of our conversations included the the difficulty in our in in being able to grasp what the state really does when they when they give a raise. And and so my understanding of what Ms. Claman was describing was the state and how they advertise what they're doing to make sure to, well, so so what what we have to do is just about every time is go back and say, look, the state didn't give a 2% raise, the state put 2% into their port, you know, and we have to walk through that detail that she walked through, that to really very clearly state that when this, when 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 state government talks about a percentage raise, what they really do is put that burden on on us to try to find a way to actually to actually give that. So I will tell you, in my conversation, she gets it, and she and she's been working on explaining that to teachers. I did have a couple of teachers ask about a 2% raise because they heard it in the on the news, and so she's been having to correct that misunderstanding, just like we've been having to correct it.
I don't see, I don't see any other hands raised. There were some, but I think they went down with that explanation. With no other questions, let's move to a vote, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Lydia Glenn. Angela Durham.
Angela Durham, yes.
Dan Cash.
Dan Cash, yes.
Elliot Mitchell.
Elliot Mitchell, yes.
Brad Fiskus.
Brad Fiskus, yes.
Jenna Priya.
Jenna Priya, yes.
Jake Albreth.
Jake Albreth, yes.
Sheila Cleveland.
Sheila Cleveland, yes.
Candy Emerson.
Candy Emerson, yes.
Rick Wimberly.
Rick Wimberly, yes.
Eric Welch.
Eric Welch, yes.
Casey Hall.
Casey Hall, yes.
Nancy Garrett.
Nancy Garrett, yes.
Your vote is 12 yes, zero no.
Thank you, Ms. Glenn. The next item on the agenda is the intent to fund elementary, middle, and high school land purchases. Mr. Golden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the first of a number of requests for intent to funds based on the the five-year capital plan that you approved in November, to take that next step towards our funding request for for Williamson County Government. This makes me smile to do this because this is regular business, right? This is this is the normal kind of work that that we do. And so the first item is a request for $11,250,000 to to make some land purchases. We gave those details. It's ultimately for two elementary schools and one high school that are projected to open in 2025 and 2026, to to go ahead and buy now, and per our strategic plan, recommend approval.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve?
Casey Hall, motion to approve.
Mr. Haw makes the motion. Do we have a second?
Angela Durham, second.
Ms. Durham, seconds. I see no discussion. If not, we'll move to a vote, Ms. Glenn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Lydia Glenn. Angela Durham.
Angela Durham, yes.
Dan Cash.
Dan Cash, yes.
Elliot Mitchell.
Elliot Mitchell, yes.
Brad Fiskus.
Brad Fiskus, yes.
Jenna Priya.
Jenna Priya, yes.
Jake Albreth.
Jake Albreth, yes.
Sheila Cleveland.
Sheila Cleveland, yes.
Candy Emerson.
Candy Emerson, yes.
Rick Wimberly.
Rick Wimberly, yes.
Eric Welch.
Eric Welch, yes.
Casey Hall.
Casey Hall, yes.
Nancy Garrett.
Nancy Garrett, yes.
Your vote is 12 yes, zero no.
Thank you. Our next item is an intent to fund a central office complex, Mr. Golden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just like the previous one, this is about land, and for really a couple of decades, there has been on the five-year capital plan off and on some intent to funds related to a central office complex. So when the board voted in November, it included a request for funding a land purchase for central off for a central office complex when the time comes. And so we do recommend approval because you all have 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 included that on on our plan. Again, per our strategic plan, the idea here is to to get some land, the earlier the better. What we've learned here in Williamson County is that if you if you don't buy land now, it's going to cost more later. So that's our that's our request for this particular. it's going to cost more later. So that's our, that's our request for this particular item.
And is that your recommendation?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I recommend approval.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve from Candy Emerson.
Ms. Emerson makes the motion. Is there a second?
Angela Durham, second.
Ms. Durham, seconds. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Golden, I have my hand raised here. I just, I just have a question about the utility of the Williamson County Administrative Complex, and I think anybody who goes and gets car tags understands that, you know, there's a lot of traffic through that building. I don't know what the county's population was when, when everybody moved into what was formerly the, as longtime Franklin folks know it, the old hospital. But what are the plans for that building strategically? And can you tell us a little bit about the history of the district staying in the building or leaving the building, et cetera?
Well, sure. If I may, let me start out with some history. My marriage certificate is somewhere in that building. It's, you know, that county building has been used for a number of years. We are guests in it with county government, and there has, to your point, been a lot of growth, not just in the schools, right? Our entire community has grown, and the work of everyone in that office complex has grown. There are little baby steps here and there as opportunities arise to address some of that, some of that squeeze that we feel in that building. I'll give you a couple of examples. There is a plan for the election office in the near future to be able to move to Downs Boulevard. And that's, I think, I think that's great when that comes because that's a real challenge for election time. And, you know, in our, in our society, elections are extremely, extremely important. I think that's emphasized to us, you know, every, every time we have an election. Also, county government is, is doing a pretty significant renovation of the building right now. They've replaced a lot of HVAC units, and they've done some remediation of some existing challenges. You all have heard the stories over time, you know, with our computer room getting flooded, us actually being able to get county help to have a backup system in the emergency 911 building for our, for our computer system. There have been so many anecdotes about that. I can't speak to the long-term future of that building, but I do know that the county is investing currently in, in doing some improvements. And part of it, if I'm not mistaken, is related to some of the, some of the work we've done in our school buildings for energy savings. And Mr. Samuels has, has been communicating through his staff with county government on the future of that building, and as far as I know, the intent is for it to be used into the foreseeable future. It's just a question of when either more county government offices just run out of space, or we do, or a combination of that. Mr. Samuels, I don't know if you can give a brief answer to Ms. Garrett's question.
Thank you, sir. Mark Samuels here. Madam Chair, I think it's probably fair enough to say that the county government is making an investment in staying in that building. The energy changes and modifications that Superintendent Golden mentioned have been pretty significant. There is, within some of the plans that they've shared with us, some ability for us to get a little bit more space, but none of that has been really put down in writing and put in a timeline. But it's my, it would be my view that, that there is a long-term commitment to the building by the county government.
Thank you. I see no further discussion, so we can move to a vote. Ms. Glenn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Lydia Glenn. Angela Durham?
Angela Durham, yes.
Dan Cash?
Dan Cash, yes.
Elliot Mitchell?
Elliot Mitchell, yes.
Brad Fiskus?
Brad Fiskus, yes.
Jenna Priya?
Jenna Priya, yes.
Jay Galbraith?
Jay Galbraith, yes.
Sheila Cleveland?
Sheila Cleveland, yes.
Candy Emerson?
Candy Emerson, yes.
Rick Wimberly?
Rick Wimberly, yes.
Eric Welch?
Eric Welch, yes.
Casey Hall?
Casey Hall, yes.
Nancy Garrett?
Nancy Garrett, yes.
Your vote is 12, yes, zero, no.
Thank you. The next item is the intent to fund Brentwood Middle School. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a request for $2 million towards architectural work to, to get the Brentwood Middle replacement started. As you know from Mr. Samuels' comments Thursday night, we have had some architects doing some work without, you know, in some planning without, without any payment at this point. It's time, per our five-year capital plan, to get that work started. So we do request $2 million approval to get that work started.
Thank you. Would someone like to make the motion?
Sheila Cleveland, make a motion.
Jay Galbraith, second.
Jay Galbraith, seconds. I see no discussion. Give it another second here. No discussion. Ms. Glenn, we can vote, please.
Angela Durham?
Angela Durham, yes.
Dan Cash?
Dan Cash, yes.
Elliot Mitchell?
Elliot Mitchell, yes.
Brad Fiskus?
Brad Fiskus, yes.
Jenna Priya?
Jenna Priya, yes.
Jay Galbraith?
Jay Galbraith, yes.
Sheila Cleveland?
Sheila Cleveland, yes.
Candy Emerson?
Candy Emerson, yes.
Rick Wimberly?
Rick Wimberly, yes.
Eric Welch?
Eric Welch, yes.
Casey Hall?
Casey Hall, yes.
Nancy Garrett?
Nancy Garrett, yes.
Your vote is 12, yes, zero, no. Motion passes.
Thank you. The next item is an intent to fund Middle School East. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to make sure that I've got some clarity, I give you some clarity on that because I'm not sure I did a fully clear job back at the work session. So we have a contract for some land in the east part of the county that would include an elementary school, but there is also enough land to where we could have a middle school as well. So you can see from our, from our projections that that would be projected to open in 2023. This will allow for some preliminary work to ensure that when we do the construction work for the elementary school, that, that work, that, that infrastructure work is set up so that we can put a middle school on the same property. And Mark Samuels is here to give you any more detail if you need it, but we recommend approval.
Is there a motion to approve?
Jenna Priya, motion to approve.
Ms. Priya makes the motion. Is there a second?
Brad Fiskus, second.
Mr. Fiskus, seconds. Is there any discussion on this item, please? Yes, Mr. Galbraith.
Jay Galbraith, thank you, Madam Chair. Jason, what, maybe I missed it, but what elementary school is it? What, next to what?
It would be the east, in the triune area.
Oh, the, the, the elementary school yet to be named, right? So we haven't even built it. Okay, that's
That is correct.
I was just, I was wondering why you're being so cagey about what, which one it was. So that makes sense.
That's it. If I may, Mr. Galbraith, I know that you represent the east part of Brentwood, so for those folks who are watching, I also want to specifically mention that the land purchase that you all approved that's going to the commission includes, includes some additional elementary land as well. We project, especially in the Noonsville area, that our elementary numbers are growing.
Yes. Well, and this, so this land, is there, is there a possibility for, for a high school on the same, on the same property or adjacent at any point in time? Because I know we had talked about having, that there may well be having to have a high school out there at some point.
That's a great question. This particular property is not big enough for that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. No other hands are raised, so we can move to a vote.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Lydia Glenn. Angela Durham?
Angela Durham, yes.
Dan Cash?
Dan Cash, yes.
Elliot Mitchell?
Elliot Mitchell, yes.
Brad Fiskus?
Brad Fiskus, yes.
Jenna Priya?
Jenna Priya, yes.
Jay Galbraith?
Jay Galbraith, yes.
Sheila Cleveland?
Sheila Cleveland, yes.
Candy Emerson?
Candy Emerson, yes.
Rick Wimberly?
Rick Wimberly, yes.
Eric Welch?
Eric Welch, yes.
Casey, Casey Hall?
Casey Hall, yes.
Nancy Garrett?
Nancy Garrett, yes.
Your vote is 12, yes, zero, no. Motion passes.
Our next item is an intent to fund Summit High and Ravenwood High additions. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, this is one of our five-year capital plan items based on projected growth. You all also know that we have expanded Independence High School, Franklin High School, and Mark, if I'm missing another one, but L. Page, of course, and Brentwood. And our five-year capital plan includes addressing some of our high school growth, especially with these expansions, ultimately to slow the need for new high schools. And I will also tell you, over time, we expect similar requests for Centennial, Noonsville, and ultimately Fairview as well as growth occurs. Recommend approval.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Cash makes the motion. Is there a second?
Candy Emerson, second. Ms. Emerson, seconds. Mr. Cash, discussion?
I have my hand up to make the motion.
Oh, okay, great. Is there any, is there any discussion from any other members? Ms. Glenn, we can move to a vote, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Lydia Glenn. Angela Durham?
Angela Durham, yes.
Dan Cash?
Dan Cash, yes.
Elliot Mitchell?
Elliot Mitchell, yes.
Brad Fiskus?
Brad Fiskus, yes.
Jenna Priya?
Jenna Priya, yes.
Jay Galbraith?
Jay Galbraith, yes.
Sheila Cleveland?
Sheila Cleveland, yes.
Candy Emerson?
Candy Emerson, yes.
Rick Wimberly?
Rick Wimberly, yes.
Eric Welch?
Eric Welch, yes.
Casey Hall?
Casey Hall, yes.
Nancy Garrett?
Nancy Garrett, yes.
Your vote is 12, yes, zero, no. Motion passes.
Thank you. Our next item is an intent to fund synthetic turf football fields at Ravenwood, Centennial, and Fairview High Schools. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I view this as really phase three of a four-phase approach to converting our high school football fields to synthetic turf. You may recall that this started at Noonsville High School when we bought the land and we didn't have enough room for practice fields. That's an issue with many of our schools. As an example, Centennial High School has a fractional practice field. Franklin High also had that, and Franklin did receive a new artificial turf field with a, with a funding approval, if I'm not mistaken, three years ago. Likewise, Page. We are making a request for the next phase for Ravenwood, Centennial, and Fairview High School to get, to get synthetic turf fields. There are many issues that are, at all of those fields that are, that are different and unique to those particular locations. I will tell you also that this discussion was had about two years ago and that funding was deferred, but as part of our capital plan, we're taking it to you again, and with the request that we take it back to the commission for the next step. We recommend approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Eric Welch?
Mr. Welch makes the motion. Is there a second?
Jay Galbraith, second.
Mr. Galbraith, seconds. Any discussion, board members? I see no discussion. We can move to a vote, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Lydia Glenn. Angela Durham?
Angela Durham, yes.
Dan Cash?
Dan Cash, yes.
Elliot Mitchell?
Elliot Mitchell, yes.
Brad Fiskus?
Brad Fiskus, yes.
Jenna Priya?
Yes.
Jay Galbraith?
Jay Galbraith, yes.
Sheila Cleveland?
Sheila Cleveland, yes.
Candy Emerson?
Candy Emerson, yes.
Rick Wimberly?
Rick Wimberly, yes.
Eric Welch?
Eric Welch, yes.
Casey Hall?
Casey Hall, yes.
Nancy Garrett?
Nancy Garrett, yes.
Your vote is 12, yes, zero, no.
Thank you, Ms. Glenn. Our next item is an intent to fund asphalt roofs and wastewater plants. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is part of our annual capital request related to asphalt roof and wastewater treatment plans. As we maintain our 50-plus buildings, there is a need each year for specific work on capital, so we do recommend approval.
Thank you. We have a recommendation. Does anyone want to move to approve?
Elliot Mitchell moves to approve.
Mr. Mitchell makes the motion. Is there a second?
Dan Cash, second.
Mr. Cash, seconds. Is there any discussion? Ms. Glenn, there's no discussion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Lydia Glenn. Angela Durham?
Angela Durham, yes.
Dan Cash?
Dan Cash, yes.
Elliot Mitchell?
Elliot Mitchell, yes.
Brad Fiskus?
Brad Fiskus, yes.
Jenna Priya?
Jenna Priya, yes.
Jay Galbraith?
Jay Galbraith, yes.
Sheila Cleveland?
Sheila Cleveland, yes.
Candy Emerson?
Candy Emerson, yes.
Rick Wimberly?
Rick Wimberly, yes.
Eric Welch?
Eric Welch, yes.
Casey Hall?
Casey Hall, yes.
Nancy Garrett?
Nancy Garrett, yes.
Your vote is 12, yes, zero, no. Motion passes.
Our next item is an annual agenda item, the approval of school fees. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, when I just said that the first time, I was on mute, so we were all knocking that out from time to time. Annually, we make a request for school fees, and I try every opportunity I get to make sure I make this clear. Number one, we do ask for approval of school fees annually. The state calls this all fees, but they have it broken up into two buckets. One is fees related to the instructional services we provide. Those are not fees in the traditional sense of the word that we all talk about fees. Those are actually requests for donations. And so when we say fee, we are asking that you approve that. The extracurriculars could be fees where it's required in order for someone to participate. But what we, what we ask is for you to approve these, to make a request of our families to support the work as a, as a small addition to the, to the budgeting that the county does. And I will tell you also, just, just as a reminder for those who are watching tonight, our experience is that even in those extracurricular fees that really do fit that definition of fee, if someone's unable to pay, we do have booster support, PTO support, that, that makes sure that we can cover those expenses. So we recommend approval.
Is there a motion to approve?
Elliot Mitchell moves to approve.
Mr. Mitchell makes the motion. Is there a second?
Rick Wimberly, second.
Mr. Wimberly, seconds. Is there any discussion? Mr. Galbraith?
Jay Galbraith, Madam Chair, thank you. I talked to Jason, or we texted, and I spared y'all my annual stand on, on fees regarding to academic subjects, but I have to, Jason would, would wonder where I, what I was thinking, if I, had I changed my mind if I didn't say something. But I, I really, I really just fundamentally disagree that we, that we continue to, to charge fees for academic subjects, and whether it's, I don't, I don't, I don't disagree that the, that the need arises, that a need is there, but the nature of the, of when we started to charge the fees, when we had a budget shortfall, and the fact that we've never gone back and replaced that, in addition to the, the large share of the burden of the in addition to the large share of the burden of the operating of the schools from arts and athletics standpoint, that goes funded almost primarily by PTOs and boosters to the tune of roughly $20 million a year. And I mean, this is roughly a million dollars, and I just hope that we can start knocking this out. And let's start somewhere, and I'm going to talk about this in the budget. But I would like to, the fact that we, these are maximum fees, we don't have to charge these, and I would hope that if we have the money in the budget to start knocking some of this down so that we don't have to charge it, I think if we ask the PTOs, and they would voluntarily, and they would try to increase their fundraising even to offset it, I think people would rather give $10 than be asked for five. So I can't vote for this again, but I hope that we can solve some of this or attempt to solve it over a couple of years in the budgeting process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Galbraith. And I also have my hand up on this one, and I feel like I would be remiss if I did not share what I hear from my community a lot. And that is that in my community, parents say, "I'm going to pay my fees because there's probably someone who can't." And so that seems to be a way that is often expressed that families make an additional commitment to the district because they realize that there may be others who cannot pay these fees. And something that I have heard said in the county commission meetings before, and just want to say it here, that's also another way that we don't pass costs on to taxpayers who don't have children in schools by actually having these fees associated with students who are directly in schools. So I agree, in a perfect world, there would probably be, you know, a better way to do this, but for now, I just want to raise those two thoughts, those two things that I have heard in our community. So thank you. I see no further discussion, so I believe we can move to a vote.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Angela Durham.
Angela Durham, yes.
Dan Cash.
Dan Cash, yes.
Elliot Mitchell.
Elliot Mitchell, yes.
Brad Fiskus.
Brad Fiskus, yes.
Jenna Priya.
Yes.
Jay Galbraith.
Jay Galbraith, no.
Sheila Cleveland.
Sheila Cleveland, yes.
Candy Emerson.
Candy Emerson, yes.
Rick Wimberly.
Rick Wimberly, yes.
Eric Welch.
Eric Welch, yes.
Casey Hall.
Casey Hall, yes.
Nancy Garrett.
Nancy Garrett, yes.
Your vote is 11 yes, 1 no, motion passes.
Thank you. Our next item is approval of E-Plan S.R. 2 CARES Act grant for FY 2021. Mr. Golden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you know, the federal government gave what we call S.R. 2 funds to the state to be distributed to the local school systems. Our fund allocation was $2,235,327.03. We have an obligation to submit an application by March 1st to the state for those funds. Those funds are basically limited to COVID-related expenses, and then they have some things, including, you know, learning loss, school facilities repairs, et cetera. So we're asking you to approve our plan, and Rachel Farmer's staff will give you the detail in March based on the schedule. I will tell you that generally speaking, our plan includes covering one of the Chromebook lease payments, which is a little over $1.5 million, addressing CEGID expenses, and some other COVID-related expenses. What we're still trying to decide on is some small amount of funding to either address applications we've made to TIMA and FEMA that we're not sure we're actually going to get approved for, or address the new summer school, summer camp requirement that's been placed on us as part of the special session legislation. So because of that, we do ask for your approval at this time.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Elliot Mitchell moves to approve.
Mr. Mitchell makes the motion. Do we have a second?
Casey Hall, second.
That was about three people. I think I heard Casey probably the most prominently there. So Mr. Hall makes the second. Do we have any discussion? There is no discussion, Ms. Glenn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Lydia Glenn. Angela Durham.
Angela Durham, yes.
Dan Cash.
Dan Cash, yes.
Elliot Mitchell.
Elliot Mitchell, yes.
Brad Fiskus.
Brad Fiskus, yes.
Jenna Priya.
Yes.
Jay Galbraith.
Jay Galbraith, yes.
Sheila Cleveland.
Sheila Cleveland, yes.
Candy Emerson.
Candy Emerson, yes.
Rick Wimberly.
Rick Wimberly, yes.
Eric Welch.
Eric Welch, yes.
Casey Hall.
Casey Hall, yes.
Nancy Garrett.
Nancy Garrett, yes.
Your vote is 12 yes, 0 no, motion passes.
Thank you. Next up is a resolution regarding rezoning a portion of 1724 Wilkes Lane in Spring Hill, Tennessee. Mr. Golden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have a contract with a willing seller for a portion of what was once a farm off Wilkes Lane for the next elementary school. As part of that, we took our request to the city of Spring Hill for approval to rezone it so that it was officially rezoned for school use. It went through the process. They did not approve it. So we have discussed this with county leaders, and there is a process for county to approve this, and this is the first step that Ms. Osbrooks has put together in consultation with county leaders to ask you to approve the rezoning so it can be a school property, and it will then be taken to the county commission for them to approve it to be a school property. I did want to point out and emphasize, this is a willing seller. This is about city zoning. Also, we are purchasing under this contract a portion of the property. We anticipate the remaining property will be sold to a developer for homes. My reading of all this is, if we don't get the property, then a developer will buy it, and there will be more homes there. So we recommend that you approve this rezoning so that we can take this to the county commission for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Golden. We do have a hand up in the chat. Is that hand up to make the motion to approve?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve, but I also wanted to make a statement about it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Mr. Mitchell makes the motion to approve. Is there a second?
Angela Durham, second.
Ms. Durham makes the second. We'll move to discussion now. Mr. Mitchell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I wanted to reiterate that this is a logical place for the school. This is going to be a neighborhood school. The students that will most likely be zoned to this school today are traveling over a mile, couple of miles, to get to Longview, which is where they're pretty much all zoned to today, and therefore, they are not going to a neighborhood school. And the location for this school is the most logical place, given the amount of homes that have been built and are still actively being built on the west side of 31. I fully support this resolution.
Thank you. I see no further discussion. Ms. Glenn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Lydia Glenn. Angela Durham.
Angela Durham, yes.
Dan Cash.
Dan Cash, yes.
Elliot Mitchell.
Elliot Mitchell, yes.
Brad Fiskus.
Brad Fiskus, yes.
Jenna Priya.
Yes.
Jay Galbraith.
Jay Galbraith, yes.
Sheila Cleveland.
Sheila Cleveland, yes.
Candy Emerson.
Candy Emerson, yes.
Rick Wimberly.
Rick Wimberly, yes.
Eric Welch.
Eric Welch, yes.
Casey Hall.
Casey Hall, yes.
Nancy Garrett.
Nancy Garrett, yes.
Your vote is 12 yes, 0 no, motion passes.
Thank you. Next up is another annual agenda item, approval of the 2021-2022 family tuition rate. Mr. Golden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This, of course, is another annual agenda item. The family tuition rate, for those who might be coming into the county, is structured based on the combination of state and local funding. We also have an employee rate that's on there. Our proposal is to increase the family tuition rate in general based on our per pupil expenditures or receipts from the state, with the employee rate to be proposed to remain flat. And that employee rate has been flat since 2016-17, so we recommend approval.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Rick Wimberly moved to approve.
Mr. Wimberly makes the motion. Do we have a second?
Andy Emerson, second.
Miss Emerson, seconds. Do we have discussion on this item? Yes, Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Golden, is this rate per child or per family? Both the, I guess, the general rate as well as the teacher rate?
That's a great question. These are family rates, not a per-child rate, so it would be total.
And do we anticipate making, I mean, do we believe our cost for online schools is the same as our cost for brick and mortar? I guess we're breaking it up by our total cost divided by number of students, and so it's...
Well, that's a good question, too. From a pure accounting perspective, I think over time, we may be able to do some particular math on it. I will tell you, the number-one expenditure in any school system, probably like most any other business, is people. And we are serving our online students at the same ratio for people. Now, if you factored in, you know, brick and mortar and some of those things, I think it might be a little bit less.
Okay, thank you.
I see no other questions. Ms. Glenn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Lydia Glenn. Angela Durham.
Angela Durham, yes.
Dan Cash.
Dan Cash, yes.
Elliot Mitchell.
Elliot Mitchell, yes.
Brad Fiskus.
Brad Fiskus, yes.
Jenna Priya.
Jenna Priya, yes.
Jay Galbraith.
Jay Galbraith, yes.
Sheila Cleveland.
Sheila Cleveland, yes.
Candy Emerson.
Candy Emerson, yes.
Rick Wimberly.
Rick Wimberly, yes.
Eric Welch.
Eric Welch, yes.
Casey Hall.
Casey Hall, yes.
Nancy Garrett.
Nancy Garrett, yes.
Your vote is 12 yes, 0 no, motion passes.
Thank you. Our next item is another annual item, the approval of the Acceptable Use and Internet Safety Agreement for Students and Staff. Mr. Golden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The state law requires that an acceptable use agreement be approved every other year, and so we have brought this forward to you to be approved since it's been two years since you approved. Over the decades, we've worked a lot on the language, and this particular iteration actually exactly reflects the approval that you had two years ago. I will tell you that there are a lot of laws in place to do what we can to ensure protection of students for internet issues, and it's a daily practical challenge as we face that evolving internet. But from a procedural perspective, this is the agreement we're asking you to approve, recommend approval.
Is there a motion to approve?
Elliot Mitchell moves to approve.
Mr. Mitchell, is there a second?
Casey Hall, second.
Mr. Hall, seconds. Is there any discussion on this item? I see none, Ms. Glenn. Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Lydia Glenn. Angela Durham.
Angela Durham, yes.
Dan Cash.
Dan Cash, yes.
Elliot Mitchell.
Elliot Mitchell, yes.
Brad Fiskus.
Brad Fiskus, yes.
Jenna Priya.
Priya, yes.
Jay Galbraith.
Jay Galbraith, yes.
Sheila Cleveland.
Sheila Cleveland, yes.
Candy Emerson.
Candy Emerson, yes.
Rick Wimberly.
Rick Wimberly, yes.
Eric Welch.
Eric Welch, yes.
Casey Hall.
Casey Hall, yes.
Nancy Garrett.
Nancy Garrett, yes.
Your vote is 12 yes, 0 no, motion passes.
Thank you. And our final agenda item for tonight is the approval of fostering healthy solutions services. Mr. Golden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you all know, board members, I spoke to this particular item in my superintendent's report, so I am not going to repeat that. I did want to make sure you knew that this is a request for your approval based on the board policy. From a funding perspective, we do not have a funding resolution for you because this is to come out of existing professional development funds. As you know, I recommend approval and would, of course, welcome any continuing questions you may have.
Board members, is there a motion to approve?
Elliot Mitchell moves to approve.
Mr. Mitchell makes the motion. Is there a second?
Eric Welch.
Second?
I believe I heard Eric first. Eric Welch makes the second. We do have some discussion. Ms. Cleveland?
Yes. Am I off of mute?
Yes, you are.
Thank you. Well, first of all, regarding the incident rate reported, it's just that, it's those people, there's been much more reported that, or isn't on the report. And I feel our job is to create an environment and acceptance of inclusion, an environment where students feel safe so they can focus on their education and growth. We have to start somewhere, and we have to start soon. This may not be the perfect solution, but we do know, but we won't know what works and what doesn't until we have a benchmark to start from. And frankly, I think it's really, it's hard for me to wrap around my head right now that there are parents that feel that our decision such as this is politically motivated. We do need to do something. There's no question about it. And it's going to be a learn-as-we-go, but we do need to start something. That's my opinion. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Cleveland. Mr. Fiskus?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's Brad Fiskus, and thank you, Ms. Cleveland, for your comments as well. Those are mine as well. And one thing that I just want to say, we each on this board, the 12 of us, represent the entirety of Williamson County, and that means that there are multiple points of view and perspectives and people of diverse backgrounds and beliefs. And so because we have a diverse group of people that we're listening to, that we're getting comments from, our views on things may not always agree with everyone. And so, but for me, as a former teacher of 13 years, my goal in my classroom, regardless of who the child was, how they, what they looked like, where they came from, was that my classroom was going to be a place where they knew they were cared for, first of all, so that their learning would... so that their learning would happen from that. And what breaks my heart is as a parent of kids, I've got two children now that are still, or one has graduated, one is a senior, and we have a foster son. The three of them each had different experiences. All three of them are white, but they each had a different experience based on their personality. And my two children had an extremely different experience than our foster son did because of his circumstances that he was raised in. And then I hear from my friends of color, whose their children and the conversations that they have to have with their children are conversations that I would have never suspected or dreamed that I would need to have with my children. And so it breaks my heart that we're there, but we are a large corporation. I think, Mr. Golden, somewhere around 6,000 people, employees, is that right?
Full and part-time, yes, sir.
So around 6,000 employees, 40,000 students. That represents a large number of people in our community. And that's a, that's, it takes a lot to run an organization, a corporation of that size. And so it takes time to change the culture. We, this, this is a cultural change that needs to happen so that every child, whether they look like me or they look like a person of color that's not my color, that they know that the school system and the people who are in front of them, the people who are in the hallway with them, that value their perspective. And so I'm going to vote to support all people. And we have to start. We've tried to start at different places, and I agree with Mr. Golden that we've tried to start at different times. And quite frankly, some of those starts might have hurt our steps forward. But if we continue to stand where we are, we will never step forward. And I think this is, this is a step in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fiskus. Mr. Ha?
Thank you, Chair. I would like to express my support for this. In the work session on Thursday, I was inquiring about some more specifics on the process, deliverables, success benchmarks during the discussion on Thursday, which was great. And I really appreciate the different things that were brought up and the different perspectives that were shared by staff and board members. I've learned we evaluated 15 different providers. We went through this a few months ago. So I'm very comfortable with the plan. And I noted the dollar figure that was cited earlier tonight as a big concern. So I'm certain that that has alleviated because this is 1/20th of what was discussed. So fiscal concerns have been addressed. Most people I've heard who have expressed skepticism of this effort in general have said if and when there's an incident, that should be dealt with. And that is part of this. There are ways to do that skillfully, and there are ways to do that harmfully. And I think that when we talk about employees should be skilled in dealing with these things, we need to realize that these skills are acquired somehow. These are, these are skills that need to be improved upon. How are those skills shared? Those are all components of this. And, you know, I would also like to see these incidents avoided, not just responded to. So it's incumbent upon us to be proactive and to do what we can to improve this. I encourage anyone who defines our focus of schools and education narrowly to read the mission statements, read the mission statement of Williamson County Schools, read the mission statements of the individual schools. You will see "safe and supportive learning environments" mentioned repeatedly. And that is our charge. And I am supportive of this effort, and I know it's just the first step of many to come.
Thank you, Mr. Ha. Mr. Galbraith?
Jake Albreth, thank you, Madam Chair. So Casey, I wanted to share the mission statement, if we don't mind. And it's mission, strategic commitment, and mission statement. But particularly the vision statement says that Williamson County Schools will provide a supportive environment where students are challenged to pursue excellence in academics, athletics, and the arts. And our mission statement says that we exist to provide all students with a quality education that supports their intellectual, physical, emotional, and social development. I mean, that, when we went through the strategic planning process, it actually, I mean, the whole child and social, emotional, all that was, was very high. From a priority standpoint, I mean, we really changed the mission statement for the first time in a couple of iterations of this, of this whole strategic planning process. And so what caught me during the, during our discussion, and I thought we had a great discussion with Derek Young when he came to the board. And I'd actually love to have, have more of, more of those type discussions with guests if we, if we want to make those, make those available as part of, I mean, I guess we can evaluate what to do, right? And it really just involves a bigger conversation that we need to have. I'm going to, I'm interested in hearing, I'm going to, I'm actually going to support this. I think part of my hesitancy is just not, is not knowing the people. And I'm going to, I'm going to trust, trust your judgment on that this is the right, the right group to lead us and have this conversation. I do have, I think that I had a comfort level with Derek after, after our discussion. And I hope to have the same type of comfort level over the next five or six months. But I guess I have a, I have a unique perspective. I know none of us sits in everybody's shoes. We only have the perspectives that we, that we come with. And I have a family situation that allows me to have a unique point of view. Of course, I'm not black, I'm not a minority, I've never been a minority in a community that I live in. But given the, given my family situation, we do have, we have a couple of adopted kids. And so we've been able to see kind of firsthand how, how the experiences that my kids had, my biological kids had are different, and they are. And it's, it's not something that we, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that we have systematic racism in our, throughout our staff, or, I mean, it's not that at all. It's that our kids have different experiences and they need to be supported in a different way. And if, and if that's what we're doing, then I'm completely out for it. I think when people hear this, hear this topic on the agenda and look at, I think so many different things come to mind about what they're going to be doing. You see all the videos of what is being taught, or what people think is being taught everywhere. And, and I hope that's not what we're going to do here. I think that's where the political nature of this comes from, and I don't think we're coming about it in a political way. I think everybody can take it in a political way, and that's just what, what we do on both sides. But, I mean, I'm looking forward to having a bigger conversation and seeing, making sure the thought that, that any child, whether it's, you know, whatever percentage, the thought that those kids are coming into our school and don't feel, don't feel safe, whether, whether it's because of what kids are saying to them or just specific experiences that they bring to the table. I mean, that, that's something that we, we have to do something about. Now, how we do something about it, that's what I look forward to getting some, getting some guidance and from this, from this third party. So I look forward to getting, not only, and I talked to Vicky earlier, I do want to see what the, what a longer term solution is going to be. So as soon as possible, hopefully during the budget process, or by the budget process, we'll know what, what that longer term commitment is going to, is going to look like. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Galbraith. Mr. Welch?
Thank you. So I think most of the comments we've seen against making this higher have been along the lines of Williamson County Schools should be focused on education primarily. And we shouldn't be bringing in any politicization or indoctrination through our curriculum. And I would say I 100% agree with that. We should not be doing that. And our focus should be on education first and foremost. And it is. And to support that education, we put certain policies and procedures in place. Things like a bullying policy, because we know that children can't learn and feel comfortable and do their very best in an environment where they feel bullied. We put forth a policy on, not school uniforms, but dress code. Because we know, again, in order to foster a learning environment, there needs to be an environment of certain basic minimum standards, which we expect children to come to school and be ready to learn in. We have policies on school lunches and feeding those children who otherwise might not be able to afford meals. Because again, we know that if a child is hungry, they're not going to do their best to be able to concentrate on it. And with this diversity and inclusion changes that we're looking at, it's again along those same lines. We know that children aren't going to be able to do their best if they feel that they're not accepted, if they feel that they're discriminated against, if they feel a little bit odd. Jay said, you know, certainly I can't speak to, you know, a lot of these things. I would say the strongest experience that I've had was going to high school in South America. And there would be situations where I would know I was definitely in the minority and indifferent, going out for certain sports things, playing soccer in South America. And, you know, having a different language being spoken all around me or looking different, what have you. But, you know, that was such a small, minor, very small portion, which, you know, I can't relate to having it just being inclusive all the time around me. So again, sort of getting back to my original point, when we do this, we're not doing it from the perspective of we're trying to shove a certain point of view. Policy, you know, in terms of kids or adults or what have you. What we're simply trying to do is sort of say that, that we want all of our students to feel comfortable. And when they're made to feel uncomfortable, they know how to deal with it, who to go to. They feel safe doing that, and our staff does that as well. I think, agree with what Jay said as well, that I hope there's not, and I don't think there is, a pervasive policy, a pervasive atmosphere of discrimination in our schools, at least not, certainly overtly. But it doesn't have to rise to that pervasive, ongoing systematic for us to do something. We differentiate our instruction, the programs we offer if a child has special needs, or the entrepreneurship innovation center. We try and aim towards all of our students that they can all be successful. And I think this is something where very much, we have a good chunk of our students who have expressed to us that there is a need for that. So I'm very much in support of this. That's sort of my response to those who worry about it. At the same time, I would say those on the very other end of the spectrum, I'm going to caution them as well. This is not about you. This is not about your agenda, the adults wanting to push it in. It's about our students. So if you think this is sort of the opportunity for us to use all these bud words and come out and create something like, you know, we're trying to impress our freshman sociology professor, you're going to be disappointed as well because it's, it's not that. It's simply a simple way of saying that every student that we have deserves to feel safe, deserves to feel valued, deserves to feel loved. And this is a program that we're putting in place before that. If you think that's politics, then I would question, you know, maybe you need to question your own politics in that case. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Durham?
Thank you, Nancy. I just kind of, in typical Angela format, put it in buckets. And I like to think about what it's not. It's not indoctrination. In my mind, that's not like, that's not what anybody's setting out to do. It's not forcing an agenda. It's not looking for ways to expose kids to things that maybe their, the parent wouldn't agree to expose them to. It's not mandating classes, to Jason's point earlier, about the elective options and students being given a choice to choose to take a class. And what it, but what it is, is more an approach. It's more empathy. It's looking at and understanding what, what we're doing as a system. I like the fact that the agreement highlights that they're going to come in and assess and look at data and really evaluate and have a third-party look at our district. So it feels like it's more of a thoughtful, careful, just overview and evaluation. And so it feels like it's more guiding us through a strategic process for how we want to look at diversity, inclusion, and equity across the district. And it's in response to things that we're hearing from public. You know, just like to Eric's point on bullying and dress code. One day, somebody raised that as an issue, right? So we go back and we listen to the community. In fact, I think it's an excellent example of the fact that we do listen to people, and it might just be a few voices. But heck, somebody's going to bring something up that we need to listen to from time to time. And I think this is just an example of something where really it's more of giving options, building in curriculum for teachers, because as Jason also pointed out, this is coming from the Professional Development Fund. So I think about, you know, try to understand where people are against something and what they're stating. And I want to, I want to make sure I understand that perspective, too. And I think some of the people kind of feel like things are being taken away. Our focus is shifting from education, you know, wrote down the things that people said earlier, reading, writing, math, science, history. And then, of course, I don't think it's taking away from that. In fact, I think what we're doing is maybe adding to the teachers, and who knows what we're going to do, by the way. I'm making this up. But maybe we walk away from this with just an expanded professional development curriculum for the teachers, just offerings. They can elect to maybe attend a course, or maybe we end up requiring that they attend a course, just at least on awareness. But I think the bottom line is, it's not, this agreement and this effort is more to be able to make us better as a group. And I don't feel like it's going to be something that a child's going to walk in a class every day and be forced to, to do something or learn something or hear something. It's more of how we support them through the process. So I will be supporting it because I do think it's the right step. To Sheila's point, we have to start somewhere, and it feels like it's the right time. And I think this is a good-looking group. I think they're going to do a good job for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Durham. I don't see any other hands raised in the chat.
Madam Chair, if I may, just, just one last thing. I just want to emphasize, this is our effort, and they will be, if you all approve this, they will be guiding and facilitating our effort.
Thank you. Ms. Glenn, we can move to a vote, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Lydia Glenn. Angela Durham?
Angela Durham, yes.
Dan Cash? Mr. Cash?
Dan Cash, yes.
Elliot Mitchell?
Elliot Mitchell, yes.
Brad Fiskus?
Brad Fiskus, yes.
Jenna Priya?
Jenna Priya, yes.
Jake Albreth?
Jake Albreth, yes.
Sheila Cleveland?
Sheila Cleveland, yes.
Candy Emerson?
Candy Emerson, yes.
Rick Wimberly?
Rick Wimberly, yes.
Eric Welch?
Eric Welch, yes.
Casey Hall?
Casey Ha, yes.
Nancy Garrett?
Nancy Garrett, yes.
Thank you. Your vote is 12 yes, zero no. Motion passes.
Board members and staff, that's our agenda for tonight. Mr. Golden, do you have any other comments?
Ma'am, if I may, just want to thank you all for the- Uh, um, ma'am, if I may, just want to thank you all for that. Uh, we're not going to solve, um, uh, every issue, but I appreciate you helping us get on that road. Uh, and, uh, and I will tell you, um, I, I, I love our community, and I know you do, too, so thank you.
Thank you, everyone, and, um, I appreciate your thoughtful work and, um, all of the ideas that have been expressed here tonight.